In our opening ceremony, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And join me for a moment of silent prayer. Amen. I don't think there's any additions or changes to the agenda, so if there is a motion to approve tonight's agenda, I would entertain that motion.
Znee.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item four is citizen comments, where we allow time for citizens to come forward and ask questions or share comments. I do want to make note that we will not be tolerating any disparaging remarks about our employees or city staff or elected officials during an open meeting. So with that being said, I welcome anybody that wants to come up. We ask that you identify yourself, Grace.
Yes, I'm Grace DeBoer-Brown, and I just was wanting to call attention to this note on one of our emails about the grandfather clause regarding the chicken ordinance. I've had chickens for two decades, and so I apply for that grandfathered in before the original ordinance. That's the understanding, so just wanted to make that as a note. Thank you, guys.
Very good. Thank you, Grace. Anyone else? Let me come up, Glenda. Clipboard in hand.
My name is Linda Grossman, and I live at 905 Seventh Street Northeast. I've gone on my 23rd year of having chickens, and I too wanted to address the fact that we had chickens prior to when this. There's an email that I have that Brad wrote from August 6th about that I was grandfathered into have chickens.
Good. All right. Thank you, Glenda.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Any other comments? Okay, then we'll go on to agenda item number five, which is exhibit one in your packet, council, and that's approval minutes from October 21, 2024. If you had a chance to look those over, I would entertain a motion for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we're honored tonight to have our street department here, and Lou Corky. Thanks, Lou. Thanks for coming.
Technical difficulties. You guys want to pass those around, the PowerPoint's not working. But back here, we like them right there. Another entertaining year in the street department. We'll just start with the slideshow pictures you got there. The first picture I have is a picture of the Egg Door Fire. We plowed snow that night, so our night started at about 1:00 a.m. that night, plowing snow, and then the fire call came in at seven, around 7:00 o'clock, and I believe the street department was there until 6:00 o'clock that night, never broke for lunch, dinner, so I think I had a 14-hour day in the payloader that day. I got out one time, and that was it. And I don't know, it was just one that kind of hit home. It's kind of like, you ask yourself, why do I, why do I need to be here, but you just feel like you needed to? And I'm pretty sure the fire department needed our help there and ended up hauling the stuff away, and just was a very big day and something that doesn't happen every year in our department. So we was happy to help, and yeah, just thought we'd take a picture of that one and show that to you. Second picture is right behind Fairway, which is where we keep our road barricades. Fairway ended up, their employees are parking there, so we transitioned some of our property into Fairway Parking. So we had to re-rock our whole back area there, and it's made our department a little bit cramped back there, maybe not in warm weather, but come snow season, it might be a little cramped back there, so that's been a little bit of an adjustment for us, or will be coming into winter time. Next picture, another one that kind of gives you a little bit of a gut check on, I believe Rock Valley was here to thank us for being up there, but it's a picture of us running the pumps for pumping out their sanitary sewer system. We spent, I think, three days up there between the guys in my department with the pumps, and then we spent an additional week. We sent our street sweeper up there, street sweeping the roads, and I know they're very appreciative of that. Sounds like their tire shops were very busy with all the nails and screws and stuff left over from all the debris, so they were thankful of that. Next picture is actually a drone picture of us hauling dirt from the development out by the new school. I believe we hauled 75 loads of dirt from there to the new flower shop by Super 8. Just in between jobs, we kind of did that when we had time this spring. So we got the picture from somebody that, of a drone that was there the day we were hauling, so I put that on there. Helped the golf course out, they poured a new pad for their gas barrels next to their new shed, so we poured that for them, and then recently we moved the barrels over there, and so that kind of helped them clean up that area a little bit. Next photo, helped Noah and the Parks Department. We ran a water line from the, be the rec building now, down to the ball fields for watering the dirt down.
Out of vets.
Out of vets.
Out of vets, okay.
Yep, yep, out of vets. So, and then I believe Bucky Albers donated his time on that, and we helped out with that, so. Next picture, the tree pile's been a happening place this summer. With all the ash trees going down, we normally grind our trees once to twice a year, and they were there three times this year. We spend a lot of time out there. Like, I was there today probably for an hour and a half just pushing up the leaves from the weekend, so, I mean, everybody, I always hear a lot of good comments about our compost pile, but it does take some time to maintain it every day, so, but it was awfully busy out there with all the trees this summer, so. Next one is just a picture, snow fence. We just got done doing this last week. We put snow fence out north of Unity, just to help with some of the drifting in town from the northwest winds, and a little bit just west of Docman Leywin's house or the nursing home out there, just to try to prevent some of the drifting on the north road, so. Picture of that. Next pictures are, we still make our own blacktop, which is a very unique thing. I don't think many cities do that. And the picture next to it, with all the locating that we had to do this year with Premier coming into town, putting fiber in, our alleys are a mess this year. They're really hard to stay on top of because you don't want to cover up the locate marks that it takes so much time to do, but yet residents complain with potholes, and that's understandable. Luckily, the rain did quit, so we tried to stay ahead of it as best we could, and I think we're kind of back to normal on that since they're done for this building season anyway, so. And then recently, we've been, police added another car. So Brecken has been busy converting, well, I shouldn't say converting that, it's all brand new, so he doesn't have anything, usually it's fairly easy, you take it out of one and you put it into the next one. Well, this one, he started from scratch, so everything had to be, so it took a little bit longer than normal, but he does a good job with that. I think it's just about ready to roll. And the last picture is, oh, we put the stoplight, or the flash and crosswalk sign on J. Avenue going out to the new school. That was just a picture of us putting that up. And that's it for the pictures, and then. Snow seven times this winter and sanded 19. That's about half of what it was the year before, which is nice, and we're hoping for that again. And then Don Snyder, the city mechanic, he retired on July 5, and Wyatt, our new city crewman, or street crewman, started on September 30, so we went about three months with two men through this year, so. That was a few more challenges, but we made it through just fine, so. And then, yeah, just happy to have some new streets in town with the completion of 18th Street and the new streets around the new school. It's nice to have concrete, so. That's all I got for you guys, unless anybody's got any questions.
We're down to about 50 tip seal blocks?
No, it was 44, so down to about 42, is what it should be, so, yep.
What's on your agenda for next summer, the projects that you know are coming up?
As far as roads, not real certain yet. Just depends if we're going to add anything new. You know, come budget time, usually we talk about that a little bit more. Nothing that comes to mind that's going to be super big or changing, so. Equipment, I think, coming up, we, this year, we added a new duly pickup. I don't know if you saw the pickup we clean storm sewers with and haul blacktop with. We upgraded that this year, just got that, and then next year, I think there's a payloader on the docket for next year, so, around a 20-year schedule, and our caseload is at 20 years, so that'll be the big one for next year, so. But the used equipment has held its value, so that'll be a little bit easier.
Any else? Once again, I always appreciate when you get, I know it's a lot of streets to cover, and you get them pushed out. I met with a former Orange City resident in Omaha, everybody knows, Mark Lundberg, and he said, "The streets in Omaha are horrible. We would never complain about the streets in Orange," because in the winter, they don't do anything unless it's, I think it's over six inches.
Yeah.
And then it's just a one little scoop right down the middle, and I get it, it's all their streets they have.
It'd be a lot easier if it was done snowing every day at 11:00 p.m., and people would go out and be done. We've been out before where people will get up and say, "They didn't go out last night at 6:00 o'clock while we had two inches of snow in the sky," or whatever it was, so that's where, if every snow was that way, it'd be a lot easier.
You should work on that at the department.
Yeah.
Come on, yeah. No, we do appreciate all you do, Lou.
Thank you, just add, thanks, Lou. All of our departments work really well together, but as you can tell by the images that he shared, street department kind of moves around, helps everybody. Landmark Golf Course, Park Department especially, we're really helped a great deal by the work that the street department does, so appreciate that, your willingness to do that, Lou.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Okay, agenda item number seven is exhibit two in your packet, and it's rezoning a property of the Dutch Colony Addition and Adjacent Properties by the request of Madison, and we'll come, and it's committed that, and I may go ahead and just open the public hearing. Okay, we'll open up the public hearing, and Kurt will fill us in.
Yep, I'll just explain, you know, exhibit two there, the blue highlighted area is the Dutch Colony Addition, and the adjacent red properties are included in it for the rezoning due to they're not part of any development. So the request is to rezone all those properties from R1 to RS1. The reasoning behind it-
Including the rest.
Including the rest, yep, all of it, yep. So Planning and zoning is recommending city council approve it, and one of their big reasons, or not one of their big reasons, but in the local covenants, they're, they state that it was kind of thought that animals were allowable use in that area, but came down to that it wasn't, so, yeah, I don't know if anybody has anything to say here.
So the blue around Emmanuel, isn't that Emmanuel Church?
No, that is actually, the blue there is actually city limits.
Okay, okay.
It's supposed to be green, but evidently-
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Aqua, yeah. So that's not a part of-
No, that's not part of it. They're the only part out there that's not included.
With Kenny and Zoe, what was the vote for this?
I believe it was 5-0. Oh, 4-0, I'm sorry. I was thinking 5 because of the deal that 4-0.
What, and any other feedback from community, or?
Every feedback I received was in favor of it. I thought it was supposed to be that way already, so.
That's it, yeah. Yep, well, I will close the public hearing if there's no other comments to be made, and can go from there, so unless anybody has any comments, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we need a resolution to approve this rezoning.
Make the motion for the resolution to approve it.
Your support?
Support.
And it is a resolution, so we do do a roll call, and I'll start with Brett.
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
And Rod?
Yes.
Good, thanks, thanks, and thanks for, thanks, everybody, for your interest in that, in that rezoning. Okay, agenda item number eight is exhibit three in your packet, and this is to consider setting a public hearing on a rezoning of a property request.
Yep, Taylor and Grace was not able to be here due to a hospital schedule, so he just requested that I submit it for him. We got exhibit three there, so, so the request is for RS1 rezoning. It was brought to the planning and zoning for a special exemption use to allow for chickens. That failed 2-2 with the third vote of no from the chairman, Dale, and then it stated in the notes that you've received that his vote no was not just because he didn't like chickens, but he didn't like it as, or by special exemption and rezoning, so that was his, or not rezoning, special exemption use for him.
Does he do special exemptions as well as the council?
They recommend. Special exception that previously had been denied, and this was a request for change in zoning.
Yeah, same for zoning, yeah, yeah. I probably got that wrong here. So, yeah, so your math shows here in blue right now, adjacent to his property is RS1. That RS1, when it was annexed into the city, was obviously not zoned anything, and working with the property owners at the time, they requested that be rezoned as RS1, if they got incorporated into the city to give them the option to have animals and-
A little more.
-lean it on their lot, so the city granted that. So his lot next to it, to the west, is highlighted in blue, a red, and that's the property being requested to be rezoned to RS1.
I would estimate that's in the boundary here is all RS1?
That's all RS1, everything.
It's RS1.
That's too many. That was set up by the developer?
Yes.
This lot was purchased from?
Yeah, and it was two lots, just like the south lots, but they changed it into one.
So what we have before is if, so the planning zoning voted it down, so the, the Drises have come to see if we would have a public hearing on that, am I correct?
Set a public hearing.
Yeah, to set a public hearing. So that is a council decision if they want to set a public hearing, and I think you can discuss that if you wish.
Do we have any other areas that have been rezoned in the middle of town like this in the past?
Not to my knowledge, to RS1, no. There's been properties rezoned, like multifamily lots that were adjacent to it, that were residential, that we've changed to R2 for multifamily, so they were R2 properties, and there's R1 next to it, they changed those properties to R2 match for either apartments or stuff like that, that just expanding, or the college is expanding, they changed them to R2, and so.
And historically, the RS1s, are they a certain acre size?
One acre, by development standards.
As a minimum size.
As a minimum size.
Do you know what their rights are?
Theirs is one-
It's just a little bit over-
Just one over, so.
With the combined two lots, when they put the two lots together, it was just a little over an acre.
What are the rules for RS1 as far as animals or livestock? I mean, is it text number of chickens?
So basically, how the ordinance is wrote is for, in RS1 is, animals that are considered large animals is five per acre, and small animals are dictated as 20 per acre, I believe. That would be how that's written. So when you speak of large animals, you're talking cows, pigs, horses, and that type of that, and then RS, or the small animals, it's more like your chickens and your ducks and their-
So any of those can be in RS1?
Any, once it's zoned to RS1, any one of those can be, that's what it opens it up to. Just not saying that Taylor's going to do that, but he's obviously doing it for the chickens, but.
And it's zoned that way, the property is, the rest of the property, it'll be that way?
Forever. Yep, not forever unless it changes, but yes, it would be, it's not just, it doesn't stay with the homeowner, it stays with the property that way.
I sure appreciate people like Taylor moving back, getting engaged in the community, building a nice house, tremendous. I think for consistency, we need to keep this in R1. So if you're looking for a motion, or do you want more discussion?
Oh, what, we could, you can make a motion, we can still discuss.
I would make a motion, we deny this. It's consistent with what we've done in the past with other requests, I believe, and yeah, that'd be my motion.
You spoke that, can have further discussion if anyone chooses to discuss or share their Or we can call for a question again. No other comments? So, hearing none, Rod made a motion, and Daryl seconded, so all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, thanks for doing that, Kurt, explaining it. Takes us to nine, Dakota Mainstem Project Membership. Matt, are you gonna?
Yeah.
Help us with that?
Provide a little, a handout or information sheet. I mentioned this last, at the last meeting, about the Dakota Mainstem Regional Water System. This is a fairly new project, a concept that is taking place in South Dakota and has been expanded a little bit into southwest Minnesota, northwest Iowa. The state of South Dakota has a pretty good pulse and idea, and has done a lot of research on the aquifers in South Dakota, and so that's why this project and the Lewis and Clark Regional Water Project have been successful there. They just have a great, whether it's soil borings or whatever it is, they have a good idea of what's out there in South Dakota, so as kind of pointed to in the, in the handout, there's, water's a concern everywhere, not only out, you know, in the dry southwest states, but out in the Midwest as well, and looking forward to, to future sources, so they, the Dakota Mainstem Project opened up to, to basically the communities and real water systems that are on the map there, so I think it counted 29 cities and 26 real water systems, and even some of the Lewis and Clark communities and real water systems are certainly interested in this as well, so anticipate this would be a fairly lengthy project, in order, decades long, and right now, they're just getting into the preliminary study phase of what source each of the members have, what are the predicted needs going forward, and then just kind of seeing what the system might look like, what pipe sizes, what number of wells, that sort of thing going forward. So right now, it's just a, basically a minimal engineering cost, the participation that we would have on the order of, I think, less than $5,000 a year, so. If we want to, it's important, we certainly consider this and see where this goes, and just looking forward to the next 20 to 40 years and beyond, so. Need it tonight is an auction, basically formalizing our, our membership in this project, and then appointing a director and alternate to the board. It's, I guess, a pretty minimal participation at this point, but they still want a representative there, so.
You recommend? You recommend that would do this?
Yep.
Questions for?
I think when Matt and I talked about it, when we say the Lewis and Clark, which you hear a lot about, was 30-some years ago, that that began, and it just finally online, so even though we made a big investment in our own water system, as we're looking 30 years out, so I think that's probably why we're compelled to make the recommendation.
And some, there was a news thing where Sibley just got-
That's right.
-connected to that, and they've been waiting for a long time, so that was, they hung in there for 30 years to drink their water. So we need a motion if the council, okay.
Support group.
You're supporting that, before you-
There you go. You know what a motion is, then.
You guys are going to be here in 30 years.
I know, I know. He has to, yeah. So any other questions on that? Thanks for doing the research, and, yeah, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Takes us to administrative reports. Earl?
Yeah, a couple things. First of all, I left a summary from MRES meeting that Daryl and Rod and Mayor Deb were able to attend along with staff. One correction, on the second page, third paragraph, where it says 8 to 10 million, I had misunderstood Kenton and Matt on that. The city's participation would be more like 4 to 5 million, which we would also be receiving some of that back over time. It'll be a discussion point we can talk about more later. I think the intent is just to give you an idea how important our partnership is with MRES. I don't know if Rod or Daryl or Deb have anything to share from that meeting, but.
I guess one thing that struck me is the, how far out in advance they're thinking and trying to plan, so the future businesses that want to come to town and need power, or schools expanding or whatever, they're way out in the future, and just reminded me how important it is to be out thinking that far in advance. They talked about 10 million to 10 years to build a new plant. It would take them that long just by the time they went through all the regulations and permits, and so.
And as I had pointed out, Matt serves on the MRES board, and then he also serves on the board that's called MBMECA, which is kind of the broader base that also serves power, and there's a lot of cooperative agencies you start hearing about that MRES also stay connected with, so. That's just for your information. Second thing is, we are ending our current farm rental bids on two properties that will be going out for bid. We've called it the Plender Property, north of town, and also the Jelgar Heist Property, more east of town, so those are the larger properties that will be looking for some bids, so we'll get those packages put together here in the next couple of weeks, so if anybody asks about those.
And those are calendar year kind of?
We've done two-year bids, and so Brad's drawing up the contracts.
They've done from March 1 till February 28 of the following year, but it's two-year bids.
Yep. So those will be coming up here sometime soon. Making progress on livestream, actually kind of doing a test run, set up through YouTube, and then it'll be connected to our website through our, yeah, fireworks providers, so thank you to Janet, she's been taking the lead on that, and working with Isaac Clausen, Isaac Clausen from the college, who works with Mike Stokes, has helped us with our AV and IT kind of stuff, so.
We didn't have to get new equipment or anything.
No, this updated equipment would handle it, but.
Oh, good. So we are live right now.
So we're actually live right now. We just didn't promote it because we didn't know if it was going to work, but when I, when you heard my computer talking a while ago is when I had actually plugged in, and so it is working, so. And then there'll be a link that people can get to on the website as well.
Any comments from people in Omaha about their snowing move?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, I could. I wasn't thinking. Actually, they said they didn't give Mark's address.
Just an update, Dunlop Wildlife Area, area that we had damaged from floods. We've been meeting multiple times with people from FEMA. They're actually making a change in their representative that Kenton, Noah, and I will meet with tomorrow, but basically, we are, what we've done so far is right after the flood, we dewatered, pumped a lot of the water back out, but we have a kind of track with Claymoria to rebuild the berm and trail, and then also with, to get reseeded, so, Ben Holland Lawn Service will do that in the spring, and then we have some other repairs that we're still kind of working through, but it's honestly quite a process working with FEMA, so I can see those cities that have huge losses, it's a big deal, it's a lot of work, even for, you know. Our total losses probably will be in the 75 to $100,000 total, which they would pay about 75% of that back if we're successful with that. Just an FYI, that we will be looking at an OC sanitation renewal, so it would automatically renew at the end of this calendar year, but Brad just called and said, hey, just a reminder, well, you'd look for some feed- we'd look for some feedback on what might be inappropriate type of contract going forward." So if anybody has any thoughts on that, we can talk about it.
When was the, how long was the last one? Was it just a year?
It was about a year and a half that was on there, wasn't it? Because we, we kind of did it mid-year.
It was February, but was it '23? Before, I have to read it again.
We use, we've been trying to do those on at least two-year plans. And then there's provisions already in our contract for when fuel goes up or when the landfill costs go up. So any increases would mostly have to do on the admin side and, and cost of labor. It would be the things that he'd be looking at, so. Yeah, we have strategic planning scheduled for, um, December 10. And just a reminder, um, shared before, if you have something that you want on the agenda, I'll, I'll be getting a draft, uh, agenda to you sometime here in the next couple of weeks that you can kind of get a little bit of an idea and then we can always add to it. But yeah, are there any kind of next big things or just like we're talking about, looking way ahead for water and electricity and all those things? There are some infrastructure things that would be sometime in the, in the near future. We've talked water tower, we've talked, um, gas town border station. Those are some of those bigger things. We're working with, um, Northwest Iowa Development on a resurfacing of 7th Street. But then, um, tho- those are more infrastructure type things. But are there any other amenities or next big thing for Orange City that we should be talking about? If you have things, um, that you'd like to get on the agenda, let me know. So that's all I have.
Janet, do you have anything?
No.
Chief Dan, you got anything sitting over there?
Nope.
Jim?
Nothing.
Nothing. Ryan? Mike? Kurt?
Nope.
Matt? Bradley?
Uh, nothing here.
Okay, Brett?
Nope.
Yeah?
Just want to say thank you to the fire and policemen for coming to the community event at Trinity Church for trunk or treat. It meant a lot to the kids and helps to build some of that safety that they're into, so thank you.
Although we're live streaming, I can say go out and vote tomorrow.
That's right, yeah. And it won't show up two weeks later or something, all right?
Exactly.
Nothing? I don't either. I'll ditto with what Darren said and, and, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming.